Everyone, we'll go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, January 15, 2013. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, February 5, 2013, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property.
Motion for being made?
Second. Any questions or comments?
Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. There are three items, D, E, and F.
Motion for adjourned?
Second. Any questions or comments?
Motion passes.
We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Noxious Weed Control Authority. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item one, approval of the minutes of the Noxious Weed Control Authority meeting held on Tuesday, November 27, 2012.
Motion for approval?
Any questions or comments?
Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the Noxious Weed Control Authority Board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to item three, resolution authorizing the county weed superintendent to sign and serve notices on behalf of Douglas County Noxious Weed Control Authority.
Motion for approval?
Any questions or comments?
Motion passes.
Item four is a presentation and approval of the Douglas County Noxious Weed Control Authority's 2012 annual reports for the Nebraska Department of Agriculture. And in place of Mike Reed, today we have Kent Holm. And what do you got for us, Kent?
Good morning, Commissioners. Kent Holm, Director of Environmental Services, pinch hitting for Mike Reed this morning, who's home taking care of some sick kids. I'm here basically just to answer questions. You have the report that was submitted to you. Mike, I think, has done an excellent job in being proactive on a lot of different weed complaint issues and working in cooperation with the Lower Platte Weed Management Association and the State Weed Control Association, and also on the national level. So, would recommend approval of the report as presented. Happy to answer any questions that, at least I'll try to answer any questions. Probably not going to do as good a job as Mike, but I'm here to address them.
Are there any questions on the annual report?
Motion for approval?
Second.
On adjourned?
Okay.
We did a great job there, Kent.
Good job. Next, we'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, January 15, 2013. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, January 29, 2013. A complete listing is on file in the office of the County Clerk Comptroller and available on the website.
Move for approval.
Second. Questions or comments?
Motion passes.
Next is the consent agenda. There are 11 items, items A through K.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Madam Chair, the items are A through L.
Oops, sorry, A through L. My mistake. Thank you.
Well, A, L, K.
The last one.
The last L, yeah. Still to approve the consent agenda.
What is, excuse me, what is item L?
L is the claims presented by the clerk for pursuant to the Nebraska political subdivision store claim.
Oh, I see. It's just not marked.
Yeah.
Got it.
It is online, and I messed up.
Thank you.
Okay. You did read that right.
Commissioner Rogers? Motion passes.
Next, we'll move to the recognition and proclamations, and we have a very special one today that I actually talked to our senior commissioner here on the board that we felt, I felt was appropriate for him to read this resolution, and then Commissioners can comment thereafter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And indeed, I am honored to be a part of this. This, to me, is the end of an era of Douglas County government. Kathy Kelly has been with us for 23 years. She had to win me over. When I first campaigned for office, I really campaigned against Kathy and Mike Kelly. When we posted for the CAO's vacancy, when she filled it, another Commissioner and I paid personally out of pocket to advertise nationwide. We were concerned about the way the process was going. But, at the end of the day, Kathy has absolutely won me over. I am now her biggest fan and will miss her terribly. I'm guessing that she is sitting behind me with a pretty big grin at the moment. This is her last meeting. She's been grinning a lot this last week. So, I am honored to read the following resolution on her behalf. Whereas Kathy Kelly began her career with Douglas County in 1989, serving as the county's ombudsman, and subsequently served as the county's administrative specialist from December of 1994 until February of 1998; and whereas in February of 98 Kathy was promoted to the position of chief administrative officer for Douglas County and has served in that position for the past 15 years; and whereas during her 23 years with Douglas County Kathy has focused on assuring the provision of quality services, minimizing the risk and liability to county government, promoting a healthy work environment and ethical standards, and strive to maintain sound fiscal practices and a AAA credit rating; and whereas during her tenure with Douglas County Kathy Kelly has achieved several honors, including the Nebraska Association of County Officials President's Award for distinguished leadership in county government, the Heartland Juvenile Detention Association Award for outstanding service and contribution to the field of juvenile justice, the Hope Medical Outreach Coalition Champion of Hope Award, and the Metropolitan Area Planning Agency's Regional Citizenship Award; and whereas Kathleen Kelly was elected president of the National Association of County Administrators in 2007, and served on the NACA board from 2002 to 2009; and whereas during her career Kathleen Kelly has committed much of her free time volunteering for programs that assist the poor and the sick, and she currently serves on various boards and committees dedicated to improving the lives of the residents in our community; and as a secular Franciscan plans to continue these volunteer efforts in retirement; and whereas Kathleen Kelly, through her long and distinguished record of dedicated public service and volunteerism, has set a positive example for other public officials and leaders in our community to follow; and whereas Kathleen Kelly has announced her retirement from Douglas County effective February 1, 2013, now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners that we hereby express our sincere appreciation to Kathleen Kelly for her 23 years of dedicated service to the residents of Douglas County, and further express our best wishes to Kathleen for a long, happy, and healthy retirement dated today's date. And I would be honored to move for the approval.
Second.
I would ask, are there any Commissioners that would like, oh, Commissioner Kraft?
As one of the newer members of the Douglas County Board, I knew Kathy before I came on, but I knew her through my role as a city councilperson for the city of Omaha. And she was highly respected on the city side. So, I came in not knowing what to expect, but knowing that we had a prize in Kathy Kelly. And Kathy, you truly are a prize and an asset to the county. The historical knowledge you have and the wisdom and the things that county boards and government officials have tried over the years that you've observed is going with you. But, we really appreciate your years of service, and thank you.
Commissioner Tusha?
Oh, real fast, I do think we should make her get up here and give a speech.
I think so, too.
Commissioner Tusha?
I just want to say Kathy, you will be greatly missed. When I first came on board, I had, and I still some days don't have any clue what's going on, but when I first came on board, you were there to help me even after hours. When I had questions and anything, you were there all the time to help me and guide me and make, and help me to the point that I am today. And I really want to say thank you, and I appreciate you, and I wish you the best of luck. I know you will have a wonderful second life to continue with your family and your friends. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I have a lot of memories of Kathy Kelly, too. We go back way before county board days and back to Democratic politics and Vice President Mondale running for president and all sorts of things. And Humphrey, we were always with the old team, it seemed like. And one of my fondest memories-
You have to say "old."
Okay, ancient, how about ancient? No, a few years ago, anyway, you know. One of my fondest memories is, there are really two. One of them is that when you deliver news to Kathy that is, oh, you know, not some serious thing like, you know, someone being injured or hurt, but if you say something to her and, just the other day, I had to call her and tell her about something that I found out in county government about the deputy who was driving on the DUI. And when I told her about it, I just felt like I should let her know. And it was one of my favorite exclamations that only Kathy gives, and this is it, now try my imitation, "What?" And that was one of my favorite things, was signing something I could tell Kathy that would bring about a response of "What?" So, anyway, that's one recollection. But one of my really all-time favorites is something really pretty simple, and it kind of follows with, certainly with my sense of humor. We were in Minneapolis, and Kathy had loaded up the big SUV, whatever they were called back in those days, I guess covered wagons, no, they were, it was a, it was a big vehicle she was driving. And I was riding either shotgun or right behind her in the passenger seat, and the place was filled with, you know, Kellys and Boils, and we were going out to get something to eat, and we'd been to her home and saw her mother and sister and so forth. We had a wonderful time. And she's backing out of this tight parking place, and I had the window down, and she's, I can see her face, because I was behind her, I guess, so she's sitting there looking, making sure she gets out real well, and all of once I reached my arm up and banged it against the side of the truck, and, ooh, it's one of the brake, and it was the equivalent of "What?" So, anyway, lots of fond memories and great political campaigns and lots of good years here, so I really wish you a lot of happiness, Kathy.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Commissioner Rogers?
Well, I guess I'll speak more to the national round, and just pretty much thank you, because outside of you and Carol, who really kind of walked me through NACO, particularly at the beginning, and so particularly you being the president, you can appreciate some of the toils that come with that, but I want to thank you for that. Everybody else says more about the stuff here locally, but nationally, I appreciate the guidance from that, and definitely hope to, through the rest of my year, continue and hope I'm respected among my county peers like you are among the administrative peers. So, I appreciate it and wish you well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Kathy, I just want to say thank you very much for your service to the people of Douglas County and really to the state, and also to wish you the best and enjoy your great family. I know you've got a grandchild due soon and some other things, so really enjoy and take care. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm going to try to make it through this. You know, I can remember the first time that Kathy came up to me and asked me to work for me, and that was right after the Exarbin vote. And there was a pretty contra, another controversial issue on Highway 275 out in Valley. And, of course, I was new, I didn't know anything about roads, you know, I'm from the, in part in the city, you know, I didn't know anything about it, and she just pretty much grabbed a hold of it and led me down the path along with our county engineer, Tom Doyle, and really worked with a lot of the people out in the county. And so, I gained a lot of respect for Kathy over the years. And while they say politics can be ugly, it can be good and it can be ugly, and there's been times where politics have gotten in the place of, in the way of, not only our friendship, but our working relationship. But, in the end, I have always respected Kathy for what she did and what she stands for and what she's done for county government. And so, not only you, but your family will now get their full attention of you, which they deserve, like we've all had for all these years. And I wish you the best and love you.
Thank you, Chair Burgeson. I appreciate that very much. Well, it's the end of the road, my last board meeting. I want to thank all of you. It's been a tremendous ride, and we've accomplished some great things, and I'm grateful for that. I hope our financial situation continues to be sound. That's very, very important. And I want to thank all of you. I see the faces of the people. We've had some really good times, and Commissioners, you have the most dedicated, committed staff, and they are all so interesting. They are interesting outside of work with their home lives and their achievements within the community, but then professionally here at the county, you couldn't have better leaders. And that goes for the elected officials, too. So, with that, thank you. Oh, and I would have to mention the judiciary and our great relationship with the courthouse, because it has been absolutely the best. Cooperative, collaborative, and thank you. Thank you all.
Now, I would ask that if anyone here would like to come down and say anything, I know we normally don't do that, but please feel free to come down and share a tidbit or two if you would like. We would love to hear them.
I get it. One second.
Give us some dirt.
Commissioner Tusha?
I just want to say the reason they are here is because we were threatened this morning to make sure you got a seven vote to let you retire.
Hi, Doug.
Hi. It's a pleasure to be here to wish my boss far well. She's worked hard for county government. I noticed you've cleaned up a lot since the last time I was here. It was a cheap little podium, and RJ Brown was in the back telling me how wrong I was about everything, so it's a pleasure to be here under these conditions today. Best of luck, Kathy, and we enjoy it.
Rooney Daniels, I'm a member of the Superior Judicial Court, and I just wanted to stop by and, like so many of you, Kathy Kelly taught me about county government. A few weeks ago, she attended the last JDAI committee, and I will say to you what I said then. When she announced her retirement, she said that it has been her great honor to be the guardian of the county's most vulnerable members, and I will tell you a better guardian they could, they could find. Thank you.
I have to take the opportunity to just thank Kathy for all of the good counsel and advice and keeping, keeping us collectively out of a lot of trouble. You know, there's always, you know, harking back to Commissioner Boyle, so I've been on the, on the receiving end of the phone call, where, you know, I'll call Kathy and say, uh, someone's, what? It's kind of that, you know, it's like, I know I'm going to get a dramatic pause out of this, but anyway, there, there's just have been a number of times where I just, you know, I call Kathy and say, hey, what do you think about this? And, you know, we've got some stuff going on here, and, you know, the counsel and advice that she gives is priceless. You know, I don't think she gets enough credit for, for how she deals with, with staff and, and just all of those things, all those intangibles that you can't put a price on. But, wonderful, wonderful supervisor. I mean, it just, I look back and thinking, you know, she gives you the, she gives you the reins and lets you do what you need to do to get your job done, to, to, to work in the best interest of county government. But you know what? When, when you kind of get out there a little ways, and she's like, and she's good about that, and, you know, she, and she tells you, hey, look, no, don't go there. So, Kathy, I really appreciate, and good mission.
Hey, Commissioner Boyle, before the Roger comes up, you also forgot, in addition to what, it's a, oh, my god. Anytime I heard that from the next office, I knew something big was happening.
Roger Morsey, Douglas County Assessor, I just came up for the hug and kiss.
It's the parade of the Irish.
Big day today. Obviously, the memories are too numerous to, to go into, but one funny story that went on when she was ombudsman was Commissioner Green and Commissioner Rosenblatt appointed a committee to study methane gas out at the State Street site, and I saw Kathy after the meeting. She said, "What do I know about gas?" I said, "You know nothing, but you're going to learn really fast."
That's right.
We did end up doing that project, but that was a good one.
Well, again, thank you all for sharing, and I'm sure we'll have more time and opportunities at her open house Thursday to share even more. Kathy, we do have the resolution in a frame if you'd like to come forward. Oh, I'm sorry, wait, Commissioner Kraft?
That's fine. Yeah, I just wanted to say, though, this is, this, what people have said goes on to show you had the ability to create a staff that was quality, dedicated, and loyal, and that benefited every citizen here in the county. Absolutely every citizen, especially those who were the poorest of the poor and the neediest of the needy. Thank you.
Thank you.
We all love you.
Oh, thank you. And be assured, you picked a good successor with Patrick Glomindal, and with Diane Carlson on board, and Marcos, and Karen, everybody else on the staff, Mike Gronicki goes on, and I'm going to miss people. Jan, Daryl, Sharon.
Joe.
Ann, Joe. They're, they're going to do good work for you and keep everything above board, and hopefully they'll be very cognizant of our fiscal status this next budget. And anyway, county's in good hands. The citizens can be assured of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Citizen Comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the
Hi, Laura.
Hi. Laura McCormick, 336 Beverly. As several of you, I believe, know, I have been attempting to examine court records, specifically juvenile court records. And there has been some communication between myself and Mr. Friend about the manner in which that would happen. And his most recent communication to me indicated that I needed to utilize justice, which on its face seems as though it should be no problem. That is not the case. And I'm not comfortable disclosing the court information, because while court records are public records, I think it's inappropriate, Mr. Kraft, to announce publicly court file information about private citizens. I know I've had it done to me. So, I'm not going to stand here and go over a specific court case. I would be happy to share this information with any of you, should you desire. If you, I'm standing here looking at the court record, there, because Douglas County was the last convert to justice, we have a situation where anything prior to 2010 is labeled 2010. And so, if, for example, a citizen is looking at the justice screen, everything prior to 2010 looks as though it is 2010. And if you examine these files, let's say at the Creighton Law Library, there's a fee associated with every image that you examine. Now, if I'm at home and I'm trying to examine an image and I don't want to show the paper, it will tell me, like, I'm looking right here, there was an order entered, and I can see the judge, and it says there's an image. I can look at that image on justice. But for many documents, particularly in court cases that have gone on for a long period of time, there is no image. So, in essence, when you tell citizens that they can only look at court documents, which are public records, online, you are telling them that you cannot examine them at all. And I have a problem with that. And so, I am here before you asking for your assistance, because I do understand that the, the law, so to speak, is not entirely clear as to how this access should, should occur. I am adamantly opposed to any notion that a citizen should have to sit in front of a computer terminal. Let's say you're 65 or older, and you want to look at a, at a file, you should be able to come down to the courthouse and look at paper records. And in fact, many other citizens are allowed to look at paper records. It's just I'm not allowed. So, that's my problem, and I would, I'm open to whatever suggestions you might have as to how the records can be readily available.
Okay. Thank you, Laura. We'll, I'll have a conversation with John Friend. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda? Next are the public hearings. We have one, transferring budget dollars appropriated in original 2012-13 adopted budget that were set aside for future salary increases and provide additional budget dollars due to general fund-approved grants for the county attorney department. Increased budget for federal drug forfeiture for additional training and equipment. And Joe, I don't know, did you have anything else to add?
Yeah, just one, just one short item. On the public notice, the, the amount is slightly different. We didn't add in earlier during this fiscal year, we added $650,000 to the risk insurance budget to cover a significant claim. And so, if you add that $650,000, the final revised budget now would be $326,126,447. So, that was just reflecting that. Other than that, these are pretty straightforward and just reflect union settlements and the 2% increase that we gave in, in December to the non-union county employees, and it's being funded all out of the salary adjustment account, all the pay increase. funded all out of the salary adjustment account, all the pay increases.
Any other questions? There's, this is the public hearing. I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion passes.
Next are committee discussion and action items. The first is the finance. Commissioner Duda and Morgan.
There isn't anything to report, except that February 4th next week, we, on Monday at 1:00 PM, HMA will present the consulting report that they presented, so hopefully we can all be here. That'll be a public meeting. It should last several hours, but I think it's a very important meeting that we'll be having, at that time to listen to the options and suggestions and ideas for the future. Period.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yeah, I know Commissioner Kraft, the time tried to schedule around, is it, I know you talked about taping it. Is it a way we can request that it's taped? Because I may need to look at the tape of it when I get back. I know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we request that?
I didn't know.
I remember the discussion.
No, I was, but then I got called, so I couldn't.
Okay.
Did we check to see if Cox could tape it?
It's being televised, but I remember a couple hours. It is. Karen said it is, so, okay.
Not the entire time, though?
The entire time.
Okay.
Okay. Good deal. Thanks.
Okay, good. All right, that all fair?
That's it.
Next are the administrative services. It is the discussion and approval for adopting the rules of order for 2013. And what I thought we would do is, if I could get a motion and a second to approve those, then we would have discussion about some, a couple of amendments that have been introduced by Commissioner Boyle.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay. With that, do you, do you want to introduce your amendments, or?
Sure.
Okay.
Let me just say a couple of things before I do that. The purpose of these amendments are to really kind of, I think, update our approach to appointments and to people serving on boards and commissions, to at least look at it. I hope that you'll, maybe we could discuss them today and maybe vote on them. I don't know if we'd have to vote on them today. I suppose they would, maybe you've already had a chance to look at them. But it's an attempt to open up appointments, and it also is another amendment, rotates the chair of the county board in a way that cuts down on people really opposing each other. And it is a way to, I think, just kind of rotate the chairmanship in a way that is, I think, more friendly than sometimes we see competition. And I, you know, we always close ranks afterwards, but I just think it's something I'd like to suggest and see what you think of it. So the first amendment is that terms would be established for all appointments to all boards and commissions, including those that are commissioner-appointed, as well as those that the commissioners sit on. I think it's, you know, there are several boards that are very important, I think most of them are very important, some are more important than others, that a lot of commissioners will like to serve on, and sometimes it's, it's, you know, the person who's sitting on the board doesn't want to give up the seat because it is something that he or she is interested in. So it really ices out another commissioner who may want to serve. So I'd like to see terms, and I think that goes for other boards and commissions, you know, planning, you know, all sorts of different commissions that would bring different people to perspective on those boards. So that's the first amendment. Madam Chair, I don't know if you want to...
Should we talk about that one?
Sure.
I guess I defer to the chair.
Yeah, I was going to say, let's take them one at a time. So with that one, do you want to make a motion on that one, to amend the rules?
Okay. Well, it may die for lack of a second, but anyway, I'll make the motion to adopt that as a rule.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, so we can have some discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
So are you suggesting that on the committee assignments, for examples, we put down the list, finance, or pension, whatever, are you suggesting those be rotated? Or are you talking more about the building commission and those kinds of things? Are you talking about both, all of them?
Well, I wouldn't have a problem with all of them, but I think sometimes there are, you know, I'd be open to that. I hadn't thought about those, but that's something that could be included.
When you say "those," are you talking about?
About these committees that we chair.
The finance and so on. Yeah, the only thing I think is that we do seem to do well on the appointment, finance, pension, whatever. We put down our suggestions. I've been, you know, well satisfied, but I'm probably the easiest one to please on the board. But the other one, I would say, as far as, you know, the building commission or some of those, I mean, I would be supportive to say, hey, if you serve, and I'm not sure, how long is the building commission? Five years?
Four years.
Four years? I would think if you're on the board and it's, you know, you've served a couple times on it, then I think it'd be good to have that person maybe relinquish that so someone else could do it. So I'd support that idea, for sure, on some of those, to rotate them after two terms of that, or some of the other ones you're talking about.
Okay. And the other thing I'm thinking about is some of the boards, and I don't mean to single them out, but they come to mind, the planning board, where a person is appointed, and it seems like, you know, we never really pay much attention to what they do unless we get something from them. But they'll serve for quite a long time, which is not bad, but it's just that, you know, we saw when we had an appointment to make, there was quite a bit of interest in people being appointed. And I think it allows citizens a chance to step up who are interested, and I think it just expands our horizons, and I think it's a good thing to, then it would encourage other citizens to apply for these boards if there were terms that were, a term ended. And even if someone on the planning board wanted to be reappointed, they could apply, but at the same time, we could accept other applications. I just think it's a good thing to do that. So that's really, in a nutshell, my suggestion. And as for committees that the commissioners are appointed to, you know, who select, I really don't think that has to be a part of it. I mean, that kind of fluctuates anyway, so, but I do think the boards and commissions that we have, there's quite a list of them, should have term limits, and we should have a mechanism for encouraging people to apply.
No further discussion. There is a motion and a second on the floor for the amendment to establish for all appointments to all boards and commissions, including those that commissioners are appointed, as well as those that commissioners sit on. Please vote.
Just one moment, please.
So the term will be eight years, four years?
We haven't said it. Or we can set it now, but we haven't set the term. Commissioner Morgan?
I was saying, you know, I'd like to see is... If somebody's on a building commission, at least have, if they wanted to, and the board went in that direction, that you could do at least two terms. I know, Pam, you just went on. So you get to working on it, and I think two terms is great, so I'd probably want to add that as a friendly amendment to it.
I think that's reasonable.
If that be fair.
I think that's fair.
That's all.
So just to be clear, establishing these terms would be two, four-year terms at the max?
All right. If some of them are five years, then it'd be two, five years. I don't know if any of them are five years.
Well, that's the problem. Some are three years, some are one year.
And some have more terms.
Well, they would all, this is, this would change that they are all termed. They would be all termed.
We would establish terms.
We would establish terms.
So it's when they're appointed, business promotion council, whatever.
Right, right.
And you're talking about the finance committee?
Right.
Well, yeah, now, yeah. And this includes everything for right now.
Yes.
Finance, the whole deal.
I think so.
And finance is usually one year, so it'd be two years.
I don't know. I mean, I said, you know, the committees that we serve, and I don't mean, this sounds pretty self-serving, I know, but, I mean, I think there's others, you know, I'm serving my second go-around with corrections, which I enjoy, but, you know, I think there's probably others on the board who would like to do it as well. And so I don't plan on asking for that next time out, just because I think somebody else should look at it. So that's kind of where I am. I just think, but those, the commissions, the, excuse me, the committees that we had, you know, like Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Duda on finance, I don't see that being, you know, one year or two years or whatever. I mean, I'm just glad we've got somebody who will do it, you know? And I'll have to take them to a lunch at Piccolos again and talk them into it. So I don't see that being part of this, but at the other parts, I think we should have terms on it, and I think it just makes sense.
So you don't see those as being part of it?
No.
If I could suggest that we, if this passes to establish term limits, that those term limits be brought back.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
As an amendment to the rules. We can do that anytime during the year.
Right.
But if this passes, that we then sit down and try to establish which committees we're talking about, boards we're talking about, and then look at the ones that already have the years established.
That'd be perfect.
Okay. Commissioner Morgan?
And I'm not sure this is gonna pass the way it is. Would it be better if we waited a week, know exactly which ones we're talking about so there may be greater support? Because the pension board, we might say, "That's included," or, "We're voting for something," and then we're gonna have to vote again anyway, because then we may not like it as well, but, hey, maybe pension board or...
I'd like Commissioner, if I could, I like Commissioner Borges' suggestion, so we don't get, because during a week is not a good, I don't think we have enough time to really form all those opinions on terms. And plus, if I'm not misgauging the big grin on Commissioner Duda's face, we might not be bringing this back at all. So, anyway, I think, what I'd like to see is have us go ahead and consider this, and then if it does pass, you know, if we see a pig flying through the room, if this does pass, then we can get back to the details, okay?
Okay. So everybody's clear that we're voting on whether or not to establish term limits for boards and committees, and then we'll move on from thereafter, see how it passes, see what happens. Please vote.
I'm surprised.
Now the second amendment that...
Thank you, PJ.
Well, he had to, his second amendment.
Oh, not always. Not always. I remember, I remember, I remember incidents here where a commissioner would make a motion and vote against his own, his or her own motion by the time the vote was taken.
The second amendment.
The second one, I'm gonna speed right on through. This is really, you know, there really isn't a lot of conflict going on, but I think it, in the election of the chair and vice chair, what I'd like to see, personally, what I'd like to see, is the chair of the board sometime in, during the year before the term begins, maybe in October, that you, the chair would draw a number from one to seven out of a hat, and if it was number three, for example, or number two, which is Commissioner Tusha's district, that she would be said, "Okay, you're, you're the first one up. Do you want to be chair in 2014?" And she says yes, then it's a done deal, we, you know, close ranks and elect Pam as chair. And it's because some, many boards do just simply rotate the chair. There's no conversation about it. It's just done numerically, and it moves around the, and it's kind of a nice thing. It shares the authority. Having said that, I have no interest in ever being chair. So if it came up and I, it was my turn, I would decline, and then the next person after me, and it would be Commissioner Tusha again.
Ann, I have no...
Not necessarily. It would be, well, I'm not sure how it works out, but anyway, the next person would then be offered the chair, and if that person wanted to run, then it was a done deal. I just think it spreads the, you know, authority around, and I'd just like to see that happen. That goes for the vice chair as well, and that's kind of it in a nutshell. So if I, I'll make a motion, and if I get a second, we'll vote.
Guys, for lack of a second, you have a third amendment. The appointments to various boards are rotated automatically.
Yeah, this one, you know, the last time, without getting, well, I'll have to get specific somewhat, there were a couple of people, at least, who wanted to serve on, well, I had someone too, three people who wanted to serve on the vacancy of the planning board. And the thing that, I'm not so concerned about commissioners' feelings getting hurt, you know, where we can, if we run for chair, we get over it, work together, that sort of thing, everybody moves on. I mean, Claire and I are moving on all the time. So anyway, the deal is that, the thing with these appointments is that it involves a member of the public, and I get very concerned about someone who says, "I'd like to be on the planning board," and then they get rejected. Or they, their name doesn't even come up, that they're, you know, I guess we often, we say that, "Well, someone else was in front of you," which is okay, but I don't want to get to a point where, where a couple of years ago, where we had two or three people in the audience that wanted to be appointed to a position, and the chairs, the commissioners were arguing about, we don't do that now, thank God, but arguing about, you know, "This is the person I want." And so what happened was, the citizens in the audience were, you know, they were the people who got clubbed. Two of them were very embarrassed, I'm sure, and left, and what's that do to their zeal for public service? So I'd like to see a method where, if a vacancy comes up on one of these boards or commissions, really any of them, after we set their terms, of course, that it would rotate so that people would have an opportunity to diminish the specter of people being embarrassed when they're not selected. So I'll make a motion to offer this third amendment.
Guys, for lack of a second?
Claire, this your last chance.
We'll go.
Well, I, let me just say, I appreciate, I know some of these things look a little bit off the wall, because they probably are, but I think it's just an approach that I personally have, and I appreciate the opportunity to bring them up, so.
We appreciate you bringing them up.
I'll survive with whatever we end up with. Thank you.
Commissioner Tusha?
Mike, I just want to say thank you for thinking outside of the box. Unfortunately, it's way outside of the box! But I just want to say thanks for at least, you know, trying to come up with different scenarios that we can look at this stuff. I was, you know, I thought they were quite interesting, but like I said, maybe we, next time, pull them back in a little bit, but I just want to say thanks for that.
I appreciate that.
With that, we have a motion and a second to approve the 2013 rules of order. Please vote. We'll move on to the human, or criminal justice. There's one item, resolution to approve contract with Heartland Workforce Solutions, and Mike Myers is here from Corrections, if anyone has any questions or comments. Mike, did you have anything to add that you wanted to add?
No, just that, this is, I'm glad you're here, obviously, Mike, so please proceed.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Myers, Community Corrections Manager for the Department of Corrections. This is a contract to provide services through Heartland Workforce Solutions, both on-site at Corrections and at the new Heartland Workforce Solutions One-Stop Career Center. I just wanted to point out that this is a, the funds for this contract are 100% from our Second Chance Act grant, so there is no county funds being expended. We do need the contract in order to transfer the funds from Douglas County as the awardee of the grant to Heartland Workforce Solutions to provide these employees.
Is there a motion to, second? Commissioner Boyle?
I just wanted to ask you if you could talk about how we'll be able to gauge the success of this program?
Certainly. We've had several meetings to discuss the outcome measurements, and with Heartland Workforce Solutions and our own reporting requirements for the grant itself, we are going to gauge on a continual basis, track the activities and the outcomes. By activities, I mean the, you know, the assessments, the various services that people can avail themselves of through workforce development. And also, we will be tracking the rate of employment, and maybe just as importantly, maybe more importantly, is actual the retention of their employment as well.
And all the people who will be served will be people who have been residents of the Department of Corrections. Is that the right way to put it?
That's correct.
Okay. So that would, that would pretty much foreclose working with Drug Court or anybody like that?
Actually, I was thinking about that when I answered. There is a, we're not boxed in to only serving individuals who are coming out of Corrections. We can, oftentimes, the folks in Drug Court or probation have been residents of the Department of Corrections at one point in time, but if we have folks that are coming in... But if we have folks that are coming in, that are a part of our partner agencies, they will be able to make referrals as well. It's just as important, when you're thinking of public safety and recidivism, to have the folks out on the streets already to be able to avail themselves of these services to gain, gainful employment as it is for those who are currently incarcerated.
And finally, I want to ask, will there be any connection, any relationship with United Way that does the diversion program for misdemeanors?
Not as of yet, but we, there is some informal discussions going on about diversion in general, but they're very preliminary at this point.
Okay. Thanks a lot, Mike.
Commissioner Rogers?
To Commissioner Boyle, there, the, the United Way's in some discussion about if they're going to renew that after the contract is up.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The United Way's in some discussion about whether they may renew that after it's up. So, there's some debate, it could come back to us to use or something like this.
Okay.
So, it's in discussion, nothing definite though, but just since you brought it up.
Good. Thank you.
Do we have, did we have a motion and a second?
Yeah.
To, okay, please vote.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Next is the Human Resources and the Civil. First item is the Civil Service Report as presented. If no one has any questions or comments, we'll move on to legislative items. And the first one is a resolution opposing the passage of 284. This changes to the Political Subdivision's Tort Claim Act, which is pending in the Nebraska Legislature, and what it does is increases the financial exposure from $1 million per person and $5 million per occurrence to $3 million per person and $12 million per occurrence, to extend it from one year to two years, the amount of time for a claimant to file a claim with the political subdivision. This was brought to us by our administration and recommended that we oppose LB 284. Commissioner Boyle?
Has anyone spoken to Senator Conrad to find out why she's introduced this bill? Has it some constituent that had a problem, or do we know?
I do not know I can find out. I will tell you that NACO did oppose it.
Right.
But I can find out, if you would like.
I can see that. I have mixed emotions about this. I mean, if we're involved in a, you know, it probably wouldn't be us so much, but it could be. If we're involved in some kind of a high-speed chase or something, and an innocent party is injured, I mean, I, I don't know that I'd be opposed to the higher limits, because it can be a devastating event.
Okay.
But I'd like to find out why, and I tried to reach her, and naturally, she's, the email address I had for her didn't work. So, anyway, Karen's working on all that for me. But we ought to find out. Maybe Kelly's, Kelly Partnership can find out for us. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Question on that one, if I may. Is the intent then to table this for a week and not take action? Then I would move for the Board going in opposition to LB 284.
Second. Any other questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
The next one is a resolution opposing the passage of LB 317. What this does is changes the duties of the county assessors relating to real property valuation. This will change it from them having to assess properties every six years to every three years. We did talk to our county assessor, and it could potentially have a $1.3 million impact on Douglas County. NACO also took a position of, in opposition of this because of the financial burden to counties on this. Commissioner Morgan?
Commissioner, I think, didn't it say to inspect? I thought it said inspect in that legislation when I read it. I'm almost sure it was to inspect the property. And in today's technology, you know, I'm not sure that's necessary to be out there also, so I support this. You know what you're saying.
It says to conduct a systematic inspection and review by class or subclass of a portion of the taxable, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, and I would think that means a systematic, meaning walking around the backyard and looking to see if you have a deck, if you have the right fence and dog, then they're not walking around anyway. And my thought is, you know, it just, with today's technology and the comps and everything, you know, I don't think it's necessary at all to start to have those inspections and pay them. You know this well in the real estate, everything.
So, are you saying that you support doing it from, for every three years?
No. I support what you're saying, to oppose this legislation, for sure.
Okay. I misunderstood.
I support you, but not the legislation.
Got it. Knew I liked you, PJ.
I would move for the approval of Item B, opposing LB 317.
Oh, my God, I second that.
Please vote.
Motion passes.
Next resolution is supporting the passage of LB 123. This is the change in distribution of the indigent defense funds. If you remember, there is a requirement right now that the $3 indigent defense court filing fee be used to fund the Commission on Public Advocacy. There's approximately $400,000 of Douglas County that puts into that pot, and we really don't utilize this commission. And we would ask, what it's asking for, this legislation is asking for those monies collected by the county in a metropolitan class or city be returned to that county. So, the money we put in, we're asking that it be returned.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any other questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
Next is a resolution approving, Resolution opposing LB 652. This was, again, brought to us by administration, and it was allowing the Jurisdiction of Civil Service Commission to hear contract issues for correctional officers. And we are asking that we pass in opposition of this, because it would really clog up our civil service. And again, they're not attorneys for contract interpretation in terms of what civil service is supposed to be doing. Patrick, want to comment? Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I, your last comment kind of baffles me, because they, this Personnel Board does hear grievances from Corrections employees, but it's always been a problem, because some of the, some of their conditions of employment are not heard, and there's no place for them to go unless you want to file a lawsuit in District Court, which is in nobody's interest. I suppose they could go there. I don't even know if the law would prevent that or allow it.
That's where they go.
But, well, do they? I mean, I, I just think this, I don't think it'd be clogged at all. I think this gives a, you know, it gives an outlet for a grievance to be heard by a Board that's appointed to hear these sorts of things. And I've attended those hearings before, and we have two elected officials from each political party, which is probably something that ought to be changed, but two people from each political party, plus, plus one person. I mean, we started out because there was a big, when the Civil Service came in, there's a big feud between the Democrats and the Republicans, so I just don't see that the partisan thing even enters anymore. But anyhow, so I think the, I think this is valid. I think it makes a lot of sense for employees to have a place to go to express their grievances, and I think it leads to, you know, things are in good shape over Corrections now. We have some things really going on very well with the cooperation of the Union as well as with management. It's a good operation. And, but I think this adds something that needs to be added. I think it's a place for them to go to have these things hashed out in a way that would be reasonable. I really do.
Would you like to add anything, Patrick, or?
Commissioners, you know, I've been here for about 20 years, and for a good part of that time, the Civil Service Commission heard appeals from non-disciplinary grievances, and it did, you know, clogged up the system extremely, and it took a lot of the resources of Civil Service Commission, administrative staff, county attorney, into the administration of Corrections. This is, although limited to Corrections, and there is a good number of grievances that are filed regularly at Corrections, this is inevitably going to be expanded to the entire county. It does, it certainly does cause some consternation on, on my part. This, these contract interpretations are best determined by either the CIR. All of those who, or most of those, at least, are attorneys who have practiced in private practice prior to becoming CIR Commissioners, or the District Court, depending on who will take jurisdiction over the grievance. To have five appointees try to interpret contract matters is problematic. So, certainly, and that's why I put that together, to oppose it. It's not going to stop with Corrections. It will, it will most certainly be expanded beyond that, so I would ask that it be opposed.
Commissioner Boyle?
I appreciate your perspective, but I think anytime we can avoid going to the CIR, going any other place, or having, and having a local resolution in a setting with people who are familiar with the working conditions and so forth, I just think this is something that we should think about before we oppose it. You know, Senator Laughtonbaugh is not exactly a real freak on labor stuff. I mean, he's on the other side usually, so it's kind of one of those things that, that's what raised my interest in the first place. But also, this is something I really think, this is, you know, if, what I'm hearing is there'll be a whole bunch of these people complaining about working conditions, well, right now, what do they do? They just live with it. And I think it adds to the quality of the workforce, it adds to the quality of the job, and it makes people, they're able to resolve their differences and their questions with the Board. I just think it's something we should, we should support, not oppose. So, that's how I feel.
What's the will of the Board?
Motion to approve opposing the passage of LB 652.
Any other questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
With that, those are all the legislative items on the agenda. The report is in your packet from our lobbyist, and just for purposes of the 10,000-foot level, there were 655 legislative bills introduced and 41 constitutional amendments, and several committee hearings have already started. NACO, Commissioner Tusha is the representative on NACO, and I was there along with Marcos for our legislative day, listening to and hearing and taking positions on all of the bills that have been introduced. There is another meeting of that Board that will take place February 1st to finish reviewing some that were on the last day of introduction. So, we'll keep you abreast of those as well as they come forward, but it's, it's a moving down there. Do we have four? Do we have litigation? We do have need for an executive session for labor negotiations. Oh, Commissioner Boyle?
I only want to make a comment back on one of the consent items that dealt with the performance of the Douglas County Attorney's Office in a very, very serious lawsuit. The young man sitting up here in Diane Carlson's chair was one of the, if not the, lead attorney on a case that was very important to the taxpayers and to all of us in Douglas County that dealt with the planning of evidence and having, I won't say anymore, but the county attorney really did a spectacular job, and we had that report a couple of weeks ago, and I just don't want that to go by. I just want it to be on the record that we are so fortunate to have the skilled people we do taking care of us and representing the taxpayers. It's just remarkable, a wonderful job. So, thank you very much.
There is a motion, is there a second? Please vote. And as we're voting, I would like to remind everyone that February 4th, again, Monday, February 4th at 1:00 PM, we will have the County Board's Special Meeting to have the Health Management Associates Report presented to us, and it is open to the public, and it will be taped as well.
And Claire will be showing it on the big screen at his place.
Motion, motion passes.
Motion passes.
Please vote in.
We already had the motion and second, yep.
No ifs, do the leave.
Well, vote and leave. We're almost there. Motion passes.
That one.